Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Sorry that you know he's trying to turn it up when I got here, but he just kicked out, so we got no need.
Roll call?
Roll call, yeah.
Becker?
Here.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Stumpowski?
Here.
Franson?
Here.
Delaney?
Here.
Knapp?
Here.
And no, Michelle is gone.
Michelle's there.
Okay.
All right, that brings us up to the roll of the agenda. Has anybody got anything to add or?
I would like to add the, um, I would like to add the email that we all received, sent in, that I forwarded on to the rest of the planning commission about the Mount County Planning Commission Information Seminar.
Yeah, I've seen that. Yup, I've seen that. Sounds like a good idea. I will be applying for that or signing up for it.
I just want to add it to the agenda and then we can talk about it when it comes up on the agenda.
Roll eleven.
Just wanted to make sure everybody got it.
Some business, yeah?
Yeah.
Let's go to, uh, eight point five. Planning Commission?
Tell me PC.
Is there something else?
I would, I would, I would, well, I think you could always add what's on your agenda. It's also, if you do it here, I would come in or give it there.
I would say during the election, I would put it in. That's the E, number seven. Anne's got some stuff she wants to talk about, uh, so, uh, hundred E, I'm gonna have Anne talk. Anything else?
What were we adding to?
Uh, Anne's got something she wants to talk about. Anybody else? We get a motion to approve the agenda? Move it? Move? Second it?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda the way it reads. Uh, with the changes, all in favor? No. All opposed? So pass.
Can you speak up, please?
Is that better?
Uh, yeah.
I'll try and, I'll try and be closer to the mic. Can we get the previous minutes? Can you read them for us so that we can have, uh, no controversy on any of that, please?
Yes, I'll be delighted to read them to all of you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Does everybody hear me out there? Just to make sure no one understood. And if I don't enunciate something incorrectly, please forgive me and talk to your high school English teacher about it. First minutes that we're gonna review this evening are March third. If some of you'd like to follow along, there's copies on the back table for you. We started the meeting off at 7:00 PM with the pledge of allegiance. We did roll call. Everyone's here but myself. We had thirty-one guests in attendance. We had an approval of the agenda. Uh, no one made, no one opposed. Roger requested to add the agenda bylaws um, to change from eighteen to seventy-two hours for the meeting notifications. That was approved. Uh, move, approval of minutes. Motion to accept the minutes from February third. Lee motioned, uh, Dennis Stumpowski seconded. Motion passed. No one was opposed. Uh, requests were made to use the microphone that was provided by Penny Facet. The board refused it.
Excuse me, but that was done by Robin.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make sure that correction so that maybe Robin gets credit for that. Old business, Robert Rand will present Thursday, March twenty-fourth. They were gonna confirm with Andy to set up, uh, bring to the board for approval. Next was the survey was presented to the board. No further information was available at that time. Uh, nothing to date from ABD Engineering at this time. Uh, draft ordinance was emailed to all. Roger was unable to print the updated version of the wind ordinance draft. We'll have copies for next meeting. New business, discussion about zoning ordinance for cement, cement slab sizes for carp, ports, decks, additions included. Make certain about setbacks. Section three, three oh four point three one can find nothing under the county code. Doesn't require building permits. Put out to road. Does the county require permit? Dave Kelsey, zoning administrator, worried about the placing too close to the road. Uh, decided, we can't decide. Not enough information available at this time. Will table tilt ordinance. Uh, motion by Roger, seconded by Lee Franson. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM, motion to have a Zoom meeting with Robert Rand, motion by Dennis Delaney, seconded by Lee Franson, motion passed. Special meeting, changes from eighteen hours to eighteen hour minimum to seventy-two hour maximum hours for public. Motion by Anne Peterson, seconded by Lee Franson. Uh, further discussion on seventy-two hour max minimum, how the word decision made to remove max. Anne motioned, uh, Lee seconded, motion passed. Public comment, Penny Bassett advised that the recall paperwork was here for signatures. Sherry Olson, information in leases passed out to the board. Jan Olson, sound system donated out of the members' own pocket, but would be decent for the board to use it. Um, Tyler Tree Wyler stated that he proposed to adjust the eighteen hour notification, felt that they had made it worse with tonight's decision of three days. I'm sorry. Let me go on. So, it was denying or ignorance. Moratorium last month didn't get brought up to the board. Additional conversation about the seventy-two hour decision made and approved earlier in the meeting, can't post anywhere until three days before, is illegal to put out there. Decision was made by the board to take out the seventy-two hour, board addressed and decided to amend. Change to bylaws, compromise, all agree. Dennis Stumpowski, no. Motion by Roger Becker, second, Lee Franson, to make twenty-four hour minimum notification, motion passed. Second shifters can't, can't come, can't hear it. Ashlyn Newell, meeting hard, complained people speaking over others. Kelly Jefferson, public sound system to work so others can hear, not as much whispering, ridiculous, haven't been able to hear a meeting in over a year and a half. Jeannie Thornhill, mic was provided and he refused to touch it. Uh, when putting issues to the board, please consider the American disability as a handicap. COVID money, paid parking lot and lighting need to be addressed. Next meeting, April seventh, respectfully submitted Dennis Delaney. Any questions? And do we have a motion to approve?
It's gonna move. Can I second it?
Yeah, second.
It's gonna move and second it to approve the, uh, minutes for last March third. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. We get the March tenth?
Since you're so delighted by the first reading, I'll try to slow down, but please try to, you have your own copy so you can read.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thursday, March tenth, the meeting's called order by seven PM. Pledge of allegiance was said. Roll call, everyone was in attendance, no one was absent. There was thirty members of the public, most signed with sign and sheet. New business, motion by Roger Becker, second by Dennis Stumpowski to hold public hearing for the proposed wind ordinance on April seventh during the regular scheduled meeting. Uh, yeses as Becker, Stumpowski, Peterson, Franson, Jermaine, Knapp, Nays, Delaney, motion passed. Motion by Lee Franson, second by Andy Knapp, to cancel meetings with both sound engineers. Yeses Franson, Knapp, Becker, Stumpowski, Peterson, Jermaine, Nays, Delaney, motion passed. Third, motion by Anne Peterson, second by Lee Franson, to ask the board to approve hiring the lawyer in attendance at the public hearing on April seventh. Yeses Peterson, Franson, Jermaine, Becker, Stumpowski, Nays, Delaney and Knapp, motion passed. Number four, motion by Andy Knapp, second by Lee Franson, to make the following change to the proposed wind ordinance. Number seven, noise. Wind energy facilities will be forty-five DVA LMAX at the property line of non-participating lots or fifty-five DVA LMAX at occupied buildings not located on non-participating lots. The sound pressure level may be exceeded during the short-term events such as utility outages and/or severe windstorms. Yeses Knapp, Franson, Jermaine, Delaney, Nays, Peterson, Becker and Stumpowski, motion passed. Number five, motion by Lee Franson, second by Andy Knapp, to change the late setback distance from half a mile to one mile. Yeses Franson, Knapp, Delaney, Jermaine, Peterson, Nays, Becker, Stumpowski, motion passed. Public comment, Robert Scott presented a visual of the percentage of residents that have signed leases with Apex, thirteen percent, demonstrating that eighty-eight percent have not signed the lease within this township. Taxation without representation. Dennis Delaney spoke about his, to his disapproval to send the wind ordinance to the board as it is written and that the PC has not been listening to what the residents truly want. Not much compromise among commission members. Recall petitions were available to be signed. Residents upset about the money, the amount of money that has been spent on attorney fees on this issue since November twenty twenty. Ashlyn Newell, two sides to the subject wind, need to consider people's rights and all people's rights in this manner. Some people are signed and want turbines. People have moved here from Grand Rapids to be surrounded by peace and quiet, not surrounded by tall industrial equipment. Ed DeYoung owns property in several counties. Some have turbines, but the turbines are not located near residential areas in the South County and are more than one mile from any lakes. Hey Scott, having turbines cited half mile from lakes is appalling. People value beauty, ideal country, peaceful, rural, undisturbed, natural countryside. That will change with industrial wind turbines. Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-nine by Lee, seconded by Dennis Delaney, and next meeting is April seventh.
Is there anybody in disagreement with that?
Yes. What's, what's? New business, number five.
Okay.
That motion with the one mile lake setback was made like towards the end and there was a lot of chatter and whatnot out here. And I thought I was voting on adjourning the meeting because that's what somebody else had said, I was just adjourning the meeting. Okay. My new business, number five, the one mile setback was at the end of the one mile setback was at the end of the meeting when there was a lot of talk and there was also a call to see if we were going to adjourn the meeting. I thought that's what I was voting on is adjourning the meeting and so I did, I unintentionally voted yes to that motion when I would have voted no, but I realized that's my bad, but I just wanted on the record.
Right.
That was my attempt. That's fine, but.
Anything else? Accept the motion to accept the minutes and with the corrections? So move, anybody to second?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Then move and second it to accept the minutes for, uh, March tenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Can you talk on the mic, please?
Motion passed.
We can't.
I am setting on it that.
You should be able to just tip it down a little bit more. Yeah, just tip it down a little bit more. You have both of you.
Hold up, we'll start.
Got it. There you go, Roger. Just sit down close to your feet.
We aren't used to all the deep fangled stuff.
All right, now, um, brings us up to our general public comment and I think we're gonna have Kyle explain some of that for us.
Yeah, so, uh, as the chair says, there is a general public comment, so as, I think all of you know, this is a public hearing, so the Open Meetings Act requires public comment for any public meeting and a public hearing requires public comment on a particular topic. So the intent of the general public comment is comment for items, uh, other than the wind ordinance. Of course, you could speak about the proposed wind ordinance if you wanted to. Um, but just know that you wouldn't have an opportunity during the public hearing to speak directly on the wind ordinance and that's the intent of the public hearing, public comment, section that will shortly follow. If you'd like to speak during public comment, please, uh, address our manager of the planning commission. Um, identify yourself with your name and address and I believe you guys use three minutes?
Just name and township.
Name and township, okay. So if anyone would like to participate in general public comment, please feel free to, uh, raise your hand together.
Tyler Treewaller, Maple Valley Township. Why do we need, this is a very small community, uh, we have limited resources. Why do we need a lawyer to say what you just said? And we're allowed to make public comments at this meeting. I think we need to have a little more heart. We need to, uh, put control in the gods hands rather than an attorney's hands. And I think that's why so many people may be showing up today is because we don't, we don't necessarily feel like we need an attorney for this sort of situation that's about our lives. Thank you.
Gordon Mass, Maple Valley Township. Why would you need an attorney that represents wind?
Amen.
Amen.
I don't, I don't represent. Yeah, we don't represent, uh, my, my chief. Okay, well, we don't represent the wind developer.
You got, you got involved in, yeah, it's the wind.
Sounds like Bass on the other side.
Yep, well, we don't. Thank you. Thank you for the comment.
That's our money.
Yes, go ahead, in the back.
Vicky Douglas, Coto Road. Dennis. Dennis, uh. Anne, where's your timer on your phone? Are you guys ready?
Well, we are, we play with our phones, that's why I brought a timer.
Are you guys ready?
The second, Vicky, please.
I could, it's not gonna be three minutes, don't worry. I would, I'm speaking to the board. I would like you to take into consideration of adding avion detection to the wind turbines and put that in the ordinance based on the latest news that's been on Wood TV, WDDM, Michigan Live about the hundred and fifty eagles that were killed that they know of, they sure there's more. And that the energy company was found guilty and fined. I have tons of eagles that fly over public land. I enjoy them. I enjoy the migration that comes here. Even though I've been told at this meeting, birds don't migrate.
This is the news article that was on Wood TV eight that I did not know Vicky was gonna talk about, why Andy, Dennis, Anne, that I happened to pronounce to you guys, but since Vicky's talking about it, or he's handing it to you now.
I've been enjoying the migration of the birds. The last, since the ice went out. Today the loons came back. I've had buffalo heads, golden eyes, poos. I'm not gonna have, I'd have the eagle coming back on. I want avion detection on the turbines. If you can add that in tonight for the ordinance. And that is my request.
Vicky, you were really quiet when you said, consider adding, and I didn't touch it.
Avion detection.
AV, okay, thank you.
A V I O.
But, uh, I've seen plenty of lawyers sitting in the crowd yakking. I mean, I'd like to have a lawyer here. I'd like to have a police officer here. And as far as the eagles go, something okay to trail apart underneath that nest over in Rayville, you think?
What?
Right behind Delaney, right underneath? So, probably.
Okay, do we have any other general public comment?
Is there comment at the end also?
There is, there is comment, uh, for the wind ordinance in the public hearing. Um, and then, of course, you could, if you, if you want to speak about the wind ordinance now, you're, you really can, but there is later on.
Kevin Murphy, Maple, Windville Township. I couldn't hear what the gentleman said, but I'm a little confused. He said underneath, there's a mobile home park underneath an eagle's nest? They don't have blades, they don't spin, or was I confused to what he just said? Somebody, please correct that or tell me what he said.
Okay, do we have any other public comment?
Well, I can't tell you, right?
Chair, I am not seeing any other general public comments, I think, oh, go ahead.
Could you make a motion to put that, uh, what do you call that? Yeah, could you make a motion to put that in here?
So, we're not in the public hearing right now, so the planning commission can, when they deliberate the ordinance, they can do that. We have to get, we have to, we're trying to get to the public hearing so we can do stuff like that.
Jessica Quakel, Hato Township, uh, eighty, Jessica Quakel. Eighty-eight percent. Eighty-eight percent. What does that represent?
Majority.
The majority of the people in the community.
Okay, anyone else? Right, Chair, I think we can end general public comment.
Okay. Anybody, uh, you got any objection to that? I don't. Move on, we'll move to new business, which is about the actual public hearing on the proposed wind ordinance.
Give the microphone.
Yes.
Turn, is it turned on? I don't know.
Now, is it?
Yeah, there we go. Roger, you need to on switch.
So now we're gonna open up for public hearing on proposed wind ordinance. Yeah, so the first, if, if, I don't know if everybody has an agenda, but the first thing on the agenda is I'm going to explain how ordinance adoption works in Michigan. I think that'll give some context of what the purpose of this meeting is and what I think the expectations that the, that the public and, and the community can have for the meeting. So I have, I, you have a ordinance, a proposed ordinance that has been drafted, I think it's a March tenth, twenty twenty-two draft. I have reviewed that ordinance, um, and I have looked at it, so if you have questions, you know, feel free to ask me, but I'm gonna talk about the process of the public hearing and then get to the public hearing, uh, right now, instead of doing that. So, the general process for zoning ordinance amendment adoption, so this would be a zoning ordinance amendment is you first have a public hearing using a planning commission. The planning commission would consider the ordinance at the public hearing. They can vote to recommend the ordinance. They can vote to recommend the ordinance with amendments and, um, once we get past the public comment portion, I can, I can tell you how to do that, if you would so choose to do that. Or you could recommend to not adopt the ordinance. The ordinance would then go to the county planning commission. The county planning commission under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act then has thirty days to essentially review the ordinance and provide its comment. You would provide the ordinance, if you recommend an ordinance, recommend this ordinance, you recommend an ordinance with amendments to the planning commission as well as a record of what happened at the public hearing. The planning commission may give you input on what they think about the, about the ordinance. You do not have to follow the planning commissions or the county planning commission's input, but they would transmit that back to the township board. The township board then ultimately votes on the ordinance. If there is an ordinance that is, uh, voted out tonight and they can approve the ordinance, they could deny adopting the ordinance, they could change the ordinance. Uh, so the ultimate, uh, the last step is the township board. And then, as I'm sure everybody knows, there is also in Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, uh, a process for the voters. If, if you don't, you feel an ordinance is, um, consistent with the community, there's a referendum process that, um, if used properly allows the public to vote on a zoning ordinance amendment. And if you re, referendum an ordinance, what it essentially does is it puts on the ballot, should the ordinance be adopted or should it not be adopted? And if it is voted down no, then there would be no ordinance, of course, in the, in the township for, for wind. And, um, it would not prohibit the same ordinance, uh, from being, you know, recommended again, although, you know, that, at that point, it's a, it's more or less a policy decision. The public hearing logistics, just so everybody understands what will happen is you would open the public hearing, so the, the planning commission would open the public hearing and they close the public hearing. Once they open the public hearing, the public, all of you in the audience, will be able to make public comment, same rules, you know, three minutes, direct your comments to the planning commission. Generally, it won't be question and answer, however, because it's a public hearing, I, I would suggest that we write down questions that we get from the, the, the public that after the public hearing's closed, we can try to answer some of those questions that the public may have about the, the ordinance. So you'd have public comment, then you would close the public hearing and then the planning commission could deliberate the ordinance. At that point, I think the planning commission, you know, if you wanna make amendments to the ordinance, that would be appropriate time. If you wanna ask me, you know, what I think about the ordinance, uh, that would be an appropriate time to do that and it would be, uh, up to the planning commission's discretion of what, uh, it would like to do at that point. So at this time, I think we are ready to start, uh, public comment on the proposal.
Can you go to one more? Comment?
I would hope that when this is all done, you don't ask Kyle his opinion. You guys were put in this position to write this ordinance and not for Kyle's opinion and you can go back to any meeting Kyle's at and Kyle always refers to, in my opinion, in my opinion, in my opinion. He's getting three ninety-five an hour. He should be guiding you if you have to have guidance, because did you guys have guidance for a public hearing the last time you wrote an ordinance? Was he here doing the same thing then? If not, I don't know why we're paying three ninety-five now. I never did. We've already discussed that. You gotta pass for him to be here. Kudos. But I don't think you need to ask his opinion when this is done. You guys are the ones that are supposed to write this, not Kyle. My county bass in Maple Valley Township, but I already know we know that.
Thank you.
Nicole Olson, Maple Valley Township, and to follow up with Penny. We don't want opinion. We want facts, we want laws. We don't want anybody's opinion. And forgive us, we don't want your opinion. We want facts, we want laws, we wanna know what can and be done and can't be done. We don't want opinions. Thank you.
Tyler Treewaller, Maple Valley Township. I'm trying to figure out why we're paying so much money to have you explain what we've been doing every month for two years. We've gone, we've had the public hearing for two years. I have not once, I've come to as many meetings as I can, I've not once heard someone just explain why turbines close to our houses are good for our community. Endless people talking about why they're not safe, why we don't want them, why it's not good for property value, why it's not good for the animals, why it's not good for the community. So why are we just not acting like it just started today? It's been going on for two years. Thank you.
Gerald Wilson, Maple Valley. Uh, just wanted to, one mile away from lakes, does that mean every lake in Maple Valley?
Yep. Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Whether there's homes on them or not.
So I think this is a good example of, um, when we can write down questions and answer it after, to make sure everybody got it.
My name is Jim Jones, Maple Valley Township. Kind of a few of the meetings, seen the pros and the cons, going back and forth, uh, for this and it's been a long ordeal and a couple of things that I would mention about this. There's so many audited, uh, compasses draw circle around all the lakes of Maple Valley Township, because I don't think you can go a mile without running across the lake, number one. Number two, um, there have been a lot of discussions about why they shouldn't be and why they should be. But one of the things that don't, they don't seem to be expressing as much as I think they should is the benefit to the entire population of Maple Valley Township by having the, the wind turbines in Maple Valley Township. That's going to be derived from Apex and it's significant. I'm of the age that, you know, health and safety and all those things are important and road conditions are important. And I think that, uh, there hasn't been enough time to spend on that. Thank you.
You didn't specify how. So another thing about public comment, we just, I, I know everybody, there's gonna be a lot of people with a lot of different opinions and if we could keep, you know, conversing with each other, everybody's gonna disagree with each other, that's the bottom line, so as, as long as we can be respectful and allow everybody to comment without being interrupted, I think that would be the best.
Yeah, Stephen Paulson, Kim Moro, Maple Valley Township. Just like the comment on the article yesterday, Greenboat Paper, the Mount County County Planning Commission net did over dolvides uh, the falls ordinance. They said it was somewhat restrictive, but they said it was better than the one, uh, strictly one coming out of, of Sydney and Pine and nothing gets. And if nothing gets changed tonight, you can add Maple Valley to that, this still can be restrictive. Thank you.
Jacob Holstein, Maple Valley Township. I'd just like to offer a possible provision to put into the ordinance. I'd like to see a, oh, like a land value put in there to protect land values in case of, if they drop, who's gonna pay? Is Apex gonna pay? Is the township gonna pay? If there is in, in the possibility of property value loss, somebody's gonna hold back the value of everybody's property that it hurt.
Yeah, Roger, I think you ought to paste that uh Sydney Township on our ordinance. Back in twenty twenty, when you met with Beesam and Albert here, and you wrote the ordinance there, you just pasted Pine Rivers on there, so I think you ought to put Sydney's on there. Now you people are gonna make the biggest decision in this township, and we'd like to explain, have you explain to us how this is gonna be good for us?
Anyone else?
Uh my name is Kevin Newell, and I'm from Maple Valley Township. At the last board meeting, I spoke about L max being placed on the current wind, wind ordinance. First, I was told by Mr. Delaney that L max only applied to non-participating properties. If you read the latest draft, it says wind energy facilities will be forty-five D B A L max at the property lines of non-participating lots or fifty-five D B A L max at occupied buildings not located on non-participating lots. This tells me what he said is not accurate, and the planning commission is trying to impose something on participating landowners that we don't want. Second, I have done some research on L max, and it should be obvious to everyone here why the anti-folks want to use L max. They want it because they know it is impossible, this is an impossible standard to meet. Not just for wind turbines, but for anything that makes noise in our township. Boats on the lake, the feed mill intrusion, or farm equipment throughout the township. All of those uses at some point will generate more than forty-five decibels of sound at a property lot. I know Andy said she thought we should apply L max to everything. Well, if that's the case, everyone better sell their boats and motorcycles and idle your farm equipment, because nothing is going to meet that standard. We shouldn't discriminate against wind energy when it comes to sound. M S U N extension puts out an, uh out a guide for wind energy zoning. They go on to say that long-term noise studies that look at sleep or annoyance are based on long-term sound levels that measure over the course of hours, days, or years.